This is the regular business meeting of the Westback Waters Selectment. The municipal meeting, June eight, two thousand, oh wait, June two thousand and eighteen.
June eleven.
June eleven. I knew that sitting down.
You're on page.
Yeah. The warrants being circulated now, the consent agenda. There were two, mind you, minutes previous meetings up for approval. And do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Can I hear a second?
I second.
Discussion. All of them favored and all opposed. Okay. The next board of selectmen's meeting will be June twenty-fifth, right here. At five thirty. There's an election tomorrow, primary. The school, the fire department will be open from eight o'clock till H P M. And go up anytime. Absentee ballots will be accepted right up until eight o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, part of the, part of the election tomorrow is also the second vote for the school budget validation. We vote twice on the school budget only, once at town meeting and once at least two weeks later. And we chose the primary election coming up, so that's coming up. Any other selection comments? Any citizens' comments? Yes, sir.
I inquired a few weeks ago about some of the crosshovers that are settled quite a bit, about paving them and where they installed their culverts across the road.
Yeah.
And I inquired with a, I don't know if I talked to you or not, I've talked to so many people. I can remember who I talked to, but one of which was a road commissioner. And I was just hoping that there could be some action on filling in the potholes. But I really, I just wanted to ask if there was any planned activities about filling in those ruts where the culverts were placed and also a couple of potholes right out in front of Nelson Hamilton's old house.
We had, it was, you had emailed me as well.
Okay.
We had, the road commissioner has filled in some of those. There are some that you're mentioning that obviously have not been filled in. Road commissioner has actually been ill as of recent, which has delayed some progress.
Okay.
So they are not forgotten about, though.
Okay, good. So they are, yes, there will be some- Next couple of weeks or something?
I don't know if it'll be in the next couple of weeks, but there will be progress in the near future to get those taken care of, so.
Yeah, they call it speed box today. It would help my back tremendously.
Yep.
There's some that are worse than others, but.
They have not forgotten about your email, so, yep.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Adam. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Here you go, we will move right along in the regular business. Any committee, our department, work groups, reports, or anything? Mr. Hennessy, sir.
Just unofficial, on the unofficial energy committee, there's still three people onboard.
As far as that.
Okay. Realizing you haven't been around to deciding what the mission will be. I'm wondering, it's okay with the board if the three of us unofficial members get together and write up what we think the committee might or might not do? Get that back to you for your final thoughts before you, and then you can decide changes to make or whatever.
That's more than likely what we would have asked you to do, so you know what's the word.
So maybe sometime this month, I'll talk with the other two proposed members.
I found-
Well, they have been appointed, they're not-
Not sworn in, all right.
Have you sworn in?
Not yet.
Well, we know who they are.
Well, this will be the first meeting, so we'll just get together, but at some point, if you can get on me to- I don't think I've sworn in, but.
I found some guy.
Well, I didn't even come to the meeting.
I found some guys, um, and they, you know, picture. Loosely binder on functions of various committees and fire and that kind of thing. And in it, I found energy committee. I didn't, I haven't read it yet, but I've seen it and I will refer to it before we get together to talk about it.
Is it possible to make me a copy of that section, Peter?
Yeah, I can do that, I've got it at home.
And just leave it here or whatever?
Yeah, I sure will, David.
All right, we'll see if you can make a, get a meeting later on this month to stop the process.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? We'll go to business items. First on the agenda is harbor and waterways committee discussion from, we met with them last Wednesday, I believe it was, Wednesday night. In a workshop, Madeline and I attended. And we did the public notification on our attendance, just for the record. And Madeline, I'll turn it over to you.
Um.
Where we're at with that.
My, I'm going. Concern about the committee is, as I stated earlier, that I'm concerned that the committee is not keeping itself within the bounds of the ordinance and seems to be much more interested in intervening in D M R business rather than being focused on their responsibilities to the town as stated in the overall ordinance.
I tend to agree with you. On the, on the other hand, in our discussion, they touched on some, David, members of the committee, touched on some, so looking forward, it was more comprehensive plan type stuff. And we're this year, we're definitely going to address the comprehensive plan. The thought across my mind was just belong to the comprehensive plan committee who's looking forward to the future rather than right now. Also presented to us by the committee was a program that people down in Chabique Island apparently are doing. Called the Coastal Waters Commission. For its purpose is to review applications for aquaculture. And going back over my notes, going back over discussions, seminar, workshop we had with the D M R. What their program is calling for is, what the statute states. Municipality has very little, if any, input or authority over aquaculture except through approval by the harbor master and the harbor master only.
Only on the, on the so-called L P As.
L P A, which is, I forget what that's called.
It allows a person to use a lease site for a year and a renewable for a year. For how many times, I'm forgetting. Maybe four, five, if that was it. Yep. But it's a limited, it's a limited lease.
The community of Chabique Island is proposing that selectmen become involved in the oversight. Also that the board of selectmen should conduct a site visit. And also the matter should go before the shellfish committee. Their input, all of whom must sign off on this application in order for the application for the L P A to be approved. The D M R, Department of Marine Resources, made it very clear and they spell all the rules out plain English that municipality has very little input except through the harbor master. And applicant for the L P A has to meet eight or ten guidelines, the paper list, and that's it. And so I think by statute, by rule, I don't see how the municipality has any authority to interfere. And also, if we did develop such a procedure as this. And the rules and regulations that would need to be developed and incorporated in order to authorize such action needs to be put into the ordinance, which means it needs to go for town meeting. So this isn't anything that can be done like right now. Could be done next year, maybe, if it can be done at all, it's legal. And that's pretty much what I think.
I checked with Flora from D M R today. Currently in Westback Waters. There are sixteen actual L P As. There may, she said we may have received one in the mail, so there would be seventeen total in Westback Waters. There's one that's kind of close to us in Harpsville, but it's not in Westback. So we wouldn't have anything to say about that if it were possible for municipalities to say that. We actually have one experimental lease. We have one standard lease. We have one standard lease application which has been completed and a second standard lease application that has not, that has not been completed according to D M R. So we are not to the point where we are overwhelmed by applications. And I believe that at the meeting last week, Joe indicated that he did not feel overwhelmed
Yeah.
by, by the process at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, Peter, just to note for the record, I received some information from folks that could not be here. Steve Hinchman contacted the office to make a few points, which I made a printout, I just handed you a few points that he wanted the board to be aware of as far as, I keep, Chabique?
Chabique.
Chabique, all right.
You can tell it's from inland.
That's right. He, he wanted to give some explanation as to why they were making, doing that process. And those three points are in the email I gave you. Feelings of the aquaculture application stop being accurate. Feelings that it allowed for the harbor master to be more of a voice for the citizens of the town. And lastly, because they were being overwhelmed in that town with these applications. So that's been passed to you. Also Deborah Bean, she wrote an email letter to the board that's been passed to you as well. It's long enough, I can't really give an overview. I'm sure Madeline will discuss further. Also, Mr. Williams sent an email last week that's been provided to you in your packets as well. So I believe that encompasses, well, also the last thing I handed you is the, in Deborah Bean's email, she references a petition regarding before Nelson's scoping session, a petition that went around. And you have a copy of that petition as well.
In the packet?
It's in addition to the packet, because I received, some of this, a lot of this information I received today.
Makes it very helpful for our meeting.
Yep. Sorry for the delay on many of these things, just like I said, a lot of this stuff just came in today, so. And yes, I am probably in land.
You know that it's addressed to the D M R director.
Right, we never, certainly nobody in the municipality ever saw that.
Because we are not in the loop.
Because we're not, we're not part of the decision-making process.
Which means we are not part of the regulatory process.
May I ask, what is the question that's before you right now? What is the issue wrestling with whether or not are the harbors and waterway committee-
The harbor and waterways committee, which was formed in two thousand and five and hasn't met for the most part since, wants to regroup to oversee aquacultural leases, which according to statute, the way I understand it, the town or a committee made up of members from the said town have no authority to do so.
Okay. So they're requesting to be able to take on these additional responsibilities or is the issue that they just-
They want to do it in the name of the town. If they want to do it individually, they're more than welcome, you know, they're welcome to have it. Yes.
Jim Williams, we don't, I am chairman of the Waterways and Harbors Committee. And we're not attempting to duplicate any oversight that the state is doing. The state has control of leases below mean old water, at least that's my understanding. So we're not trying to duplicate that. But the, the D M R is, is asking the municipality to be involved in the L P As and-
When did they do that?
When did they do that?
They're asking for harbor master approval, harbor master approval on the L P As.
Right, the harbor master.
Yes. And what the statute says is municipal approval. So a limited purpose aquaculture license and L P A is, is just that, a limited purpose aquaculture license. And by their own admission, if you will, the D M R has said this is a small thing and it shouldn't be of any consequence really, and we want to encourage aquaculture. And they've really put the burden on the municipality through the harbor master to approve or disapprove or whatever on these L P As. Now they also, on the experimental leases and the standard leases, an experimental leases for a non-renewable three-year term up to four acres. And a standard lease is, I believe it's now twenty years, my notes say ten years, but, and I believe it can be up to, yes, up to a hundred acres. They do ask for the harbor master to complete a questionnaire. And I guess my feeling is that if the harbor master said it's going to interfere with navigation, then they wouldn't approve it or they would ask for it to be relocated or considered relocated and so forth. There's ten criteria on a standard lease and seven criteria on a experimental lease. The D M R has said, this John Lewis has said that the town can consider noise and light as part of their ordinance and part of their consideration and approval on these, our input on these leases. Now on a standard lease and experimental lease, it is in the final say up to D M R to decide, the state, because they do control anything below mean old water. This form, the town of Chabique Island has developed, by their own admission, as a work in progress. It's preliminary. It's, it's got, you can just read it and see there's some conflicts. Because on the top it says Experimental Aquaculture License Impact Assessment. And then down in the bottom area, it does say something about if the L P A site is located in this plot, et cetera. So it was an attempt by the town just to give some order, consistency and fairness for all these applicants coming forward. And also to have more public notice, if you will. And we've heard that on many, at many of these meetings in that is, you know, it's, these things just appear and that people didn't know about it. And so we're looking, the committee is, and let me back up a little bit. I mean, if, if the Waterways and Harbors Committee is not the committee to be considering navigation issues and these other issues, then we're, you know, I'm sure the citizens of the town are welcome to work through any, any committee that the selectmen would choose to, to create. But where it does affect navigation, and that is one primary thing that the D M R looks at, and also this noise and light issue. You know, it's been the feeling of many people that, and myself included, in that the Waterways and Harbors Committee was a logical place for those things to be considered. Now, we have an agenda every, we've been meeting about every month, almost every night at five thirty. And we have an agenda and on the agenda, we have a harbor master report, we have many other things that we can talk about and consider. This, these aquaculture activities have taken, you know, people are very upset about some of the proposals in town, the new proposals. And so it has taken up a lot of our time to have those issues aired and discussed and so forth. And we, I think we've had some pretty good conversations. Madeline, of course, is our liaison to the board and she brings back things to the select board about our activities. So having said all that, I'm not proposing, or I should say, the committee is not proposing to use this form. It was just to stimulate conversations, what one other town has done, to have a process and so that there's, you know, it's consistent and fair. And if there's some questions that the selectmen have about concerning, if this is something that we can or cannot do, then let's find out. And you, you talked about that at our last meeting. Let's consult the attorneys and say, okay, here are the statutes, you know, what can the town do? And I guess, I've heard so far, navigation, light and noise, and, I mean, these, I think to date, we don't have any issues really, you know, with these, with these plans. But I can see it coming, because, I mean, they can have up to a hundred acres. And that's a big area. And they, I read somewhere that there's a heights restriction of, I don't know, what, it's twenty-five feet?
For?
For activities on the water. I mean, and so there's all kinds of questions in my mind about where we're going to be going with these. And I, I do think there's enough interest in the town. There's petitions that have been signed, there's been a scoping session for Nelson's Oyster Farm. There are a lot of people there. I won't give an actual number because I'm not a composite on how many were there, but there are a lot of people there. So I do think there's a lot of interest in town. And that, and so I guess my question to you is, or my request to you is, let's find out what we can do for sure. Let's go to that thing and say, okay, you know, what can we do to have more public notice, more public input? And to, so we aren't going to have issues. These, these can be fairly good size. I mean, if you can imagine a hundred acres and people working there all the time with power machinery and so forth, these are, these could be a big commercial interest. Today we have, you know, Madeline's family is, has a oyster farm. I think there's, I haven't heard any issues about that. And Peter Francisco, the same way. But I do think there's a big potential there. And once somebody gets a foothold in an area, it, you know, they're going to tend to grow and get bigger. So, and perhaps someone else in the audience has something to say about it.
I'm, my question is, what has not been fair about the process that the harbor master has currently used?
I am not making any criticism of the harbor master.
So the fair-
We're looking to the future.
So the process has been fair?
I can't really comment on that one way or the other. I have no issue personally with anything made in the town today, certainly. Joe Valancourt is, knows this river very well. But I do see potential in the future for some issues and, and for conflicts. And so I would like, all I'm asking is-
There are conflict, and I have, I have a, I have a, you know, a copy of an email that was sent this, I think today? Yes, today. The writer suggests that, that she is more concerned about recreational use of the river rather than the competing interest of commercial interest in the river. And in the interest of fairness, the river has been used as a means for people to earn a living for centuries. And, and there will be competing interests, which is why D M R has regulations. And why there's a very strict hearing process. And this particular email was exceedingly personal and accusing me and Mr. Valancourt of some kind of collusion and of conflict of interest and of holding-
Special prosecutor.
Of having, of having some kind of secret agreement. As if I might be able to keep a secret, but Joe is not a secretive person. And I'm, I'm appalled. And it seems as though the committee is really, that this is a person who's an alternate on the committee. And it seems to me that, that this is a committee that is running amok.
Peter, I have a question. You said, you said in the beginning that, that harbors and whatever it is committee hadn't met at all? And now he's saying they meet every Wednesday? So I'm a little confused.
They hadn't met for several years between around probably two thousand and seven-ish, eight-ish, until now. Till, wow, six months ago. This issue's gone on for a long time.
Since March, right?
Yeah. February.
Which is why when the topic came up earlier in the, the early, very early spring, we asked for a workshop with D M R. They sent several representatives. Very few people attended that meeting, which was sad, really, because we had-
We invited-
We had publicized it.
I wanted townspeople to attend.
I was expecting a large crowd.
Nobody cares, nobody cares. We reserved the school to have this meeting. Nobody cared. People spoke. It would make sense, I'm, I'm sorry, Daniel, go ahead. Go ahead, I'll finish what you're saying.
I, I, I can stop.
I guess my core thought is, it would make sense to, especially to the uninitiated, that the town should have oversight over the future development and use of the new Meadows River, one would think. But the state, D M R, has made it clear that we don't. The state also has a long history of mandating and not regulating and so forth and so on. Which, I don't know if that's what's involved here or not. There's got to be a reason why, there's got to be a reason why municipalities, all of them, are cut out of this process. I have oversight, oversight of the aquaculture, which is fairly new. Even, even shellfish, clams, we have a shellfish committee. But what they do has very little to do with clams. What it is all about is conservation. Doesn't have a lot to do with clams. What it is all about is conservation, doesn't have a lot to do with clams. So, you know, I, I don't know, but I'd like to find out why, why we're, we as a municipality are being cut out of the process, but can't get a straight answer.
The, the, if, if there is, if there were to be a corrective to that, that would be a process for the legislature.
Absolutely.
Through the legislature and the, and the DMR commissioner. One of the reasons, it seems to me, that DMR has jurisdiction over ocean waterways is the general principle that nobody owns the ocean, not even the town in which the ocean is located. So that, the other thing practically, it means that somebody who does not live in a coastal town has the opportunity to seek a lease and, and participate in, in aquaculture, which they likely would not if the towns were simply in control. So I think that's one of the, one of the justice issues about the use of salt water.
Well, the- The town, though, is being asked to provide input, right?
The Harbor Master is being asked to provide input.
And the law says the municipal municipality. It doesn't say the Harbor Master. It does in some places within their rulemaking, but it says the municipal municipality. As to issues of navigation, and John Wilson, is that his name?
Louis.
Louis also has talked about, there's a possibility the town could have some regulation over light and noise.
Well, yeah, that's in the, that would be in our zoning ordinances, and that applies to all throughout the town.
But just for a point of clarity, if I may, I don't have the law in front of me, but if I am recalling correctly, state law states that, yes, the municipality has to, has the right to step in when it comes to navigation. I don't recall whether or not they specify if it has to be the Harbor Master or not, I'm assuming not, because that's what you're saying. But DMR rules, the rulemaking at DMR, state statute references that DMR rules is what is going to be the law of the land, and state statute then turns to the DMR rules, which does specify that the Harbor Master is the one that has to oversee the, the navigation piece. And it's quite clear that that is the only thing, if I'm not mistaken, that the Harbor Master has a say over, is navigation.
They send a-
I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page.
No, they do send out a questionnaire to the Harbor Master on a standard lease and experimental lease. I, I don't know what those questions are.
Yeah.
Perhaps there's people here that could enlighten us about that. On the LPAs, they do ask for the Harbor Master's approval.
But I understand further that the Harbor Master doesn't give his approval, that's not necessarily grounds for denying-
Is it? There is an option, if the Harbor Master, if their approval, if the Harbor Master's approval is not, I don't wanna say valid, but if it's not, if it's maybe personal or something, there is that. Yeah, if it's not justified, then they can go to, I think, patrol officer is involved and so forth. So there is a, a hierarchy of, you know, assessment there, if that's the right term. But Peter, last Wednesday, you mentioned about, you know, asking, you know, the, asking our attorney, you know, what is it that the town can do?
And can't do.
And can't do.
Yeah, I think-
And I think that, I thought that was a perfect way to, I mean, this can't be the first time this has come up. Maybe maybe municipal has some answers about this too. And I went to a meeting of all the Harbor Masters in Casco Bay, they were all invited, there was a couple that didn't make it. And, you know, and listening to them, you know, they're, they're all having some issues of some sort dealing with these LPAs, and, and they're all kinda doing a little different things. Now, this town of Chabig, this is one of the things they did, and I'm not saying that this is the answer, it's just something that one town did, and it seems to work for them. You know, maybe there's something similar that would work in the town of West Bath, I don't know. But I really liked your, what you said about, well, maybe we just need to ask our attorney.
Well, I think it makes sense to do that. I thought over the weekend about it, and I said, well, why go to the attorney and spend all that money? They're gonna have to look into it, it's gonna cost them money, but, to hell. Why not go to the MMA first? But you go to MMA legal for a legal opinion, and they'll come back at you in four or five days to respond to your phone call. And the first thing they qualify is that MMA's legal response cannot be taken as legal advice. So, you know, okay, how many thousands of dollars of membership to MMA? So, I, I think, if the question's gonna be posed, it shouldn't just go to the attorney, the town attorney, and be done with it. It'd be up to this board to decide whether to send it forward or not.
Yeah, you mentioned about the planning commission, the planning board, I am on the planning board, and, you know, that's certainly something we would, we could, we could work on.
'Cause I would, I would also, at the same time, that the issue went to the attorney, I would want to have a little bit of advice on it. We've got, we're gonna update the comprehensive plan this year, and it looks, looks like there's some interest, more than, it looks like there's a little bit of interest, so it may turn out that we put a little bit more effort into it than just a, an examination and upgrade and a validation, really all we have to do.
Yeah.
But if we had, if we, if there's any way possible that we can get our foot in the door to, to plan for and oversee the future of the New Meadows River watershed, as well as all the rest of the town, and the place to have, the first place that it needs to go is a comprehensive plan. And I would like, personally, I would like the attorney to tell us, yep, use this language, you can, you can do this, 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 and this, or tell us, no, don't go there, don't even go there. You know, just we know for sure. So, I think an attorney's opinion is welcome and necessary on the board's part, the town's part, for more than just aquaculture. It's also for comprehensive plan issues and, you know, at least ten more years in the future, if not more.
Sorry, or, yeah, exactly, you know. Is Chabig the only town or the only island that's even looked into this? I can't, what about De Mar Scotta, which has huge aquaculture with oysters?
Well, that, that's what I was doing over the weekend, because I, I read the Chabig thing, or I began aware of the Chabig thing. In a newspaper, it's a monthly, called The Working Waterfront.
Oh, yeah.
It's published in South Wolf, like in Hillsborough or Rockland or-
I think it's Rockland, yeah.
Big article about aquaculture in there. All through the, all through the, the article, is this woman who stepped beyond substance abuse and is working as a lobsterman, and she's putting together this plan to help other women to work in aquaculture. She's got a non, put together a nonprofit, it's really, it's a good article. All through the article, she mentions communications with and interaction with Department of Human Resources. Not wanting to mention the municipality, any municipality.
So De Mar Scotta isn't looking into this in any case, or does anybody-
Not as a town, you know, it doesn't appear that way.
Wasn't that one of the purposes of the meeting at the school with DMR? That you invited Brunswick, Hopswell, Fitzburg, because we all share their river?
Yeah.
Was getting consensus from the towns what they wanna do, and basically no one showed up?
Yeah.
And they were all invited, which was sad.
Yeah, I was surprised.
With ample notice, mind you.
Oh, it was months, months.
Well, we have a lot of interest in that town.
Well, Jim, as you recall, there was very little turnout from people from West Bath at that meeting. So, so there may be some people who are interested, but I wouldn't say that there's a lot of interest, and we have not, we have not sounded out any of the other wild harvesters of shellfish about their concerns. They have, they have, in, in one meeting, very quickly said that if it doesn't happen on the flats, it doesn't concern them, so they're not, they're not getting involved. They're concerned about mud, not water, because that's the part of the, that's the part of the waterways that they have any say over at all. So, although there is some interest, I wouldn't say it was vast. And I think probably particularly, very few people are really interested in taking on DMR for very little, I would say, purpose. If you need, if you want to discuss possible planning board business, the place to take that would be to the planning board. Structures on Waterways within the leases are going to be also, those are going to be managed by DMR. And as you have been told, if it's going to be in the lease, it needs to be in the lease proposal, so that you'll be plain to people what the plan is at the initial hearing.
If I, if I may, to further on that, when I spoke to Mr. Lewis from DMR, he specifically told me that when it comes to planning boards and zoning boards and so forth, that, that very point, he specifically said that town ordinance has zero authority over the structures and so forth that are involved in these leases. Whether that's his interpretation or not, I, I don't know, but that, he specifically made that point when I discussed it with him on the phone. To, because I asked, that was one of the things I asked him directly, is, all right, if these, you know, we, if there's no navigational problems, is this something the town could maybe get involved in? And he, and he said, no, when I spoke to him.
Well, he has said something about noise and light.
Yeah.
I haven't heard him say anything that the town could control the structures, but that the, the noise and light they could, they could control somewhere. And plus navigation.
Peter, one of the points of the, of that meeting at the school was a lack of information, communication from DMR to the towns, and then for citizens of the town. And DMR indicated at that time, they would change a few things, give more information to the town clerks, so it could be sent out to the townspeople. Have they started doing that yet?
They have, and in fact, I was going to mention at the end of this to wrap things up, but under the Harbor Master tab on the website is information that I'm receiving. On the, the LPAs, the yearly, because of course, everything else, they send out notice to others and they will be in hearings, but for those specifically, they are starting to, but we don't get that many. I think there are two or three up there now.
So, is it possible to change that location of those messages to the, just the town website? So when the LPA application comes in, they have to click onto the Harbor Master tab?
Just on the front page of it?
Just on the front page, not continue, it's just a couple days to let people know there's an application there.
Absolutely.
And I think that's one of the biggest problems, is the lack of communication from DMR as to what's going on. And that would help.
I was surprised that they were unaware of, communications was poor. But then, they are the state, so it didn't surprise me.
Well, at least they did, with enthusiasm, say they would try to be better about communicating with the sound, with the towns and cities.
Because it wasn't an unreasonable request.
No, it's common sense.
All it is is email.
Yeah, so hopefully they'll can do that, but if you can change the location of that, Carly.
Absolutely, I was even thinking I should get a mailing list going, like there's a mailing list for construction and whatnot. So anyone interested can sign up to receive notifications.
In this, what we're talking about, in case people don't know, is the town does, Carly sends out an email informational to the townspeople, they want to know meetings, what's going on, so if you aren't signed up, sign up for it, you do get more information about taking place in the town.
Get on the mailing list, send the clerk your email.
Steve?
Is there more than one mailing list? I have a mailing list for, I think it's road bids, or ocean bids, so there's only a couple. But I'm thinking there should be an aquaculture mailing list, so if you're only interested in receiving those, those lessons, that's what you're hoping for.
As a point of information, I'm interested in if there's any specification that might guide the Harbor Master's decision on any aquaculture lease. I hear there's a questionnaire that he has to fill out for an experimental and a standard lease. I don't, and it would be very interesting for those interested to see what those questions are. I haven't heard if there's any guidance for LPAs. Does, can anyone give us more specification as to anything that guides the Harbor Master in his decision?
He does have, he does have criteria, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, Steve.
Is it, is it written, or is it just his decision?
Yes, I'm sure it is, no, it's, he, he, he doesn't fly by the seat of his pants.
Can we, those interested, get a copy of what his guidance is?
I'm sure he can.
Maybe it can somehow be distributed to people, or people notify that that is available and what it is.
Sure, we can do that.
Steve, are we talking about the, the questionnaire that he receives from DMR?
Both that and anything else. The questionnaires we hear applies to two types of leases. The question is, is there anything else that guides him in his decisions on the LPAs? So that those interests could find out what limits, what directs his decision.
Maybe what we could do is get a copy of the applications for each of these, and then, under the Harbor Master tab, we could put the samples on the, the website. That would be, that would be one way to accomplish some of that, but-
But I didn't serve a mailing list, I would be driven to. We can notify people when they go up?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Maybe Friday, after the election.
Yeah, after the election would certainly be good, yes.
Yeah, I would just like to see the specifics of what the guidance is, so we see on the only avenue that you indicate is available to the town, what the latitude is. As a lot of the individuals that aren't in the aquaculture business, their main concern is navigation. They do not want traditional paths, for example, the inside passage, inside middle ground, obstructed, I'll say unreasonably obstructed, but some might be worried about any obstruction. But that is a primary concern, and that is a big concern for the immediate homeowners in that area, and of the, of concern to anyone else that uses that passage, which is a lot of West Bath residents.
And there's no reason why, why the, the criteria could be widely circulated.
Yes, good.
To you?
Yeah, good.
You got that? I heard you, yes, I heard you going, did you get what I said?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm up front, so I can hear you, so, and, and anybody else have a-
Make me carry a big-
Comment or question on this topic? Anybody else have a question or comment on this topic? So we, we need to consider Mr. Williams's request that we, we'll get a lawyer's opinion on this.
So you want to ask Adam if he'll, if he'll consult with our town attorney?
Yeah.
And what specifically information do we want to, to retrieve?
How much authority and any oversight does the town have over aquaculture? Application process? Matters concerning- Matters concerning comprehensive planning. Essentially, developing ordinance for future development over the river. Going into the future, so that would be comprehensive planning. And that's pretty much it.
Kathleen, do you have lots of notes? Do you have a comment?
It just feels like it's more questions than answers. So I think going to the attorney's a good idea, and maybe we need to have another meeting in the future once we talk with attorney, with DRM, and whoever else, try to get the towns together again. Maybe the, it sounds like it's risen to a higher level than at that meeting. I'm not concerned today, but I can see where this is going in the future too, and maybe we'll be able to get it.
Well, what concerns me, I will repeat myself for the nineteenth time. What concerns me is, the town has no authority. Fine, fine, state, state can do it all they want, but there's no oversight, there's no enforcement, it's the state. And as aquaculture becomes more and more prevalent, there's going to be problems. And state, it won't uphold the regulations, it won't enforce their rules, laws, obviously. Admittedly, they won't, they won't. So why in the world won't they allow at least some authority on the part of municipality? Municipality's familiar with all the characters involved. Whereas, I don't know if anybody who lives in Powellell knows, you know, characters down in West Bath and where I'm looking at as well, in Pittsburgh, so.
And maybe our representative should be part of this also. If any change is going to be done, maybe they can assist with that.
Well, they're the ones that.
They have been, actually, and they've been getting nowhere.
Well, they're definitely set in, and they're in somewhere, so.
Yeah.
And we have elections.
And there's, you know, these, these rules here, they, I read, I read cover cover, right, words in there. And my take on these rules is first I felt that they shoehorned it in there as best they could without disturbing any of their other laws that they have, which they certainly have an abundance of. But it's solution looking for a problem, which the problem hasn't happened yet. Problem will happen in the future. And locally, we have no authority to either prevent it or to sidestep it, to, you know, to control it in any way. That the onus apparently is at the state level for that, and that worries me terribly.
When we talk about navigation, do we, can we as a town determine what that navigation is?
Not unless it's part, is my, my understanding is not unless it's part of a mooring plant that's developed separately.
Did you say a mooring?
Steve? Just one other comment in terms of some of the folks saying that there's little interest. I don't know how many of you were at the firehouse meeting room when the preliminary application explanation of a lease being inside on the West Bath side of Middle Ground was there, but there were some very spirited people, and I didn't know, didn't do a count, but let's throw out a number of like forty rather concerned citizens of West Bath. So there is concern, and it will not necessarily come forth on everyone, but if some people feel they're being infringed upon, it will come up. And has come up.
Okay, any more question or comments on this? Shall we do?
Well, if you do get your legal opinion, if you decide to do that, it might, as Kylie said, be a good idea to promote another meeting with, with West Bath and the other middle towns. And see if they're more interested in, in working toward solutions or possible solutions.
Okay.
Doesn't cost much to hold a meeting like that.
Yeah.
And invite DMR down as well again.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Now maybe our attention needs to be pointed multi municipal wide toward the DMR and their rules.
And the other thing would be to invite not just our senator and reps, but the other towns elected
Yeah.
industrial officials.
Yeah.
And being elections here, they may show up.
Yeah, we'd do that.
Do it before the election, so they, they all show up.
Yeah, yeah.
We said town.
Yeah. Guys, any other questions upon that?
So are we going to give the man some instructions? Or did we just?
We haven't yet. We might, if we vote on it. Shall we give them instructions, motion? Or shall we just let this, let this pot simmer?
I, I don't know if we should have the meeting first or spend money on an attorney first.
Well, we've been, we've been sitting, in my opinion, for only, we've been dancing around this issue for six months. And I think we're no farther along than we were six months ago.
We, we've already had, I think, a very clear indication of where DMR is. So the next, the next step, I think, is to consult with our attorney.
Find out if, if so, what it is.
To find out what the parameters of the town are.
How much trouble can we get into?
So, let's see. I'm going to move something here. A mobile, probably. That we instruct the town administrator to seek legal advice as to the feasibility of working with existing ordinances about, with the planning board and our existing ordinance with the Harbor and Water Waste Committee to see what authority the town might have in influencing the development of aquaculture in West Bath Waterways. Did you get that?
Cofflin.
Tell me more and I'll add it.
It should reference.
At, and in reference.
What a coffin might have.
To what, to what extent can the future aquaculture and the future development of the New Meadows River watershed be taken into consideration? And the comprehensive plan act too, forward.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment. What? Yes.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Let's second this, and then we'll.
Yes, good call, yes.
I'll second, okay.
Okay, now, yeah.
My question is, this is a rather extensive discussion, and this is going to, to be blunt, expensive.
Yep.
I mean, how in the weeds do you want the town attorney to get here? This is gonna, I, I can think of even from the administrator's perspective, how many hours that I've already spent reading.
Me too.
Just reading, let alone compiling my thoughts. And I suspect the board is in the same position, and Mr. Williams is in the same position. So how many hours do we want the attorney to put into this?
My guess, my guess is it's going to come back to the attorney that we don't have any authority, or else it would, there would be some written stuff somewhere, you know?
Potentially, but at the same time, if I, if I called the town attorney, which of course that's what I'm going to do, because that's going to be the directive, I'm assuming, she will ask me, how extensive, you know, how into the weeds do you want me to go? And if I tell her to go a hundred and ten percent into the weeds, she's going to give us a hundred and ten percent. And that's wonderful, but do you understand what I'm?
Yes.
I'm driving at?
I think the way to simplify that is to have the attorney look at Title 38 and rules for channel lines and enforcement as a, as a starter, rather than at this point getting the town attorney involved with the comprehensive plan. And we were talking about a couple paragraphs here as starters, which says the municipal offices of all maritime towns and plantations, other bodies empowered to regulate municipal harbors, and the county commissioners in the case of maritime unorganized townships may make rules and regulations. So I think that's where you really need the interpretation, is, is on that particular paragraph. And, because I think, isn't, isn't this other stuff that you have there, Peter, just, those are regulations?
No, this statute.
From, are they statutes too? Okay.
That's the whole thing.
Oh, I know, I've.
You've seen them too, yeah.
I've seen them too, a few times.
Got nightmares about them, sure. So I just want to be clear on that, that's all. That's the only reason I ask.
Well, I guess if the town has any authority, exactly what areas do we have authority? And as far as long, long range forward planning, can the town take into consideration the New Meadows watershed? Either yes or no answer should suffice, maybe with one paragraph answers. And, you know, i- if there is something the town can do to point us in the right direction.
Okay.
You know, for guidance, like the elusive, the elusive clause that allows a committee to assist the Harbor Master in oversight of the LPA applications, which nobody but the town should be, has been able to find that clause, doesn't really exist.
Well, we have a clause in our complaint that says that a committee can aid the Harbor Master.
Right.
It doesn't say what, it just states that a committee can aid the Harbor Master.
Yeah.
Maybe they have a similar.
Well, they can aid in mooring and, you know, that kind of stuff. Yeah, mooring.
Upon request, if I remember.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Maybe one focus for the attorney would be on the issue which concerns probably most folks, just navigation. To what extent does the town have the ability to regulate that traditional passages remain navigable in face of possible encroaching aquaculture?
Yeah?
I think if the town could have some say in what those boundaries are, and I don't know if we can or we can't, that would solve a lot of.
I'd like to know if you can, which is a very team, and I'd like to know why.
Right, but I think that would be, be laid out, because we should be able to, we know that New Meadows is hard to navigate going down through there to begin with, so it doesn't take much to block our sailboats getting in and out of there, so can we set, they have to be so far from a channel, I don't know. I mean, I just wonder if that would, if we could make our own rules for a town based on what we know about the rivers.
That that may be more the local knowledge that John spoke about. I think we'd probably question enough of the attorney for, for that to go around.
Yeah.
I think we're looking at a substantial biddling, and that may, that may help.
I mean, I think we just want to know, we want a final legal word on whether, whether we need to be sticking our nose into this or not, as a town. Individuals, citizens can do anything they want, but it's.
And should.
And it should.
When the hearing, when any hearing comes up, and if there's an LPA application that a person feels is inappropriate, then there's a place to make that known to DMR as well.
Yeah.
And with improved communication, people will be aware of those things.
Got it? Clear as mud?
Mud flats.
Clear as mud flats, yes.
Okay. We have a motion on? Alright.
Yes, and it, and it is essentially to direct the attorney to, to give us her best opinion on those topics.
Okay. All is in favor? And all is opposed? Shall we done? The problem, the problem is with the exception of Alan, Alan is taking the time to learn about this. And she's also involved in it to a certain extent. Aquaculture, or New Meadows River, or something like that, but I know very little about this, and this whole issue frustrates me, because I don't know where to start, you know?
At the risk of, of sticking my foot into a big honeypot, it was interesting to me to read the note from the citizen suggesting that I was somehow biased for the expansion of aquaculture. It is personal, it is against some of my own particular, personal interest to have the expansion of aquaculture. Because that's competition for my family's business. So if that looks as though I have been pro aquaculture, I think I would pat myself on the back for having been somewhat objective, as it starts.
Alright, we move on to number, second, marine resources, final landing warrants, Watson.
So Mr. Swanson is not able to join us this evening, he notified me that a little, a little before the meeting. So what this is in reference to is the Sabato boat landing. There, I mean, I, as I told him, I would give the board a brief overview, just so you guys are in the loop of what he's up to. The short version is that they knew, a new person has purchased the property that is next to the Sabato boat landing, which is where a lot of the diggers and so forth would park their vehicles. I guess the folks that live on the island over there were parking next, in this area as well. Since the new homeowners have purchased this area, they no longer want folks parking in their driveway, which, so. But what they have made for an offer is that if the town was willing to clear off a small piece of land that is right next to the boat landing that they own, that they would allow folks to park there, and then have access, you know, have a place to leave their vehicles and so forth. Mr. Swanson is supposed to provide us with a, for discussion purposes, provide us with a copy of a written estimate from a contractor, how much it would actually cost to clear this area to make it suitable for parking cars and trucks. He got a verbal estimate of about $2,000, is what he was told. We also would need to consider receiving some sort of an easement, a deed of easement to be, the town, so that the town could use this property if this is something they wanted to do. So I was hoping that Warren would be here so he could discuss this and the benefits, the pros, cons, and so forth. But where it stands now, he feels strongly that this is something that would benefit the town, specifically the diggers that are, you know, trying to use that boat landing. And he feels this is very generous of the homeowners that are there, that are there offering this. So I guess where we're at is the, first take the temperature of the board, let's see if this is something that you want pursued further or looked into. And if so, I can orchestrate for Warren to be here on the 25th to discuss it in further detail. And potentially on the 25th, the homeowner. And potentially on the twenty-fifth, the homeowner could attend that meeting and express to the board their feelings about an easement, and what they're willing to do and not willing to do. And then also Warren could provide a written estimate on how much this whole shebang would cost.
Just off the top of your head.
Dangerous place.
Yeah. How much money is it, the shellfish committee has got in their account roughly? Within the nearest, you know, ten thousand or whatever?
I know it's over thirty.
Okay. I think, uh...
I should have looked that up before I came down here, but I know it's over thirty.
Okay.
Can you check that money now, because it wasn't approved at town meeting?
Um, I don't know.
I don't think you can, because it wasn't approved at town meeting.
It's a capital account, though, and if there was a capital expense related directly to shellfish, why would you not be able to...
Shellfish is a cap, that's the house of, houses of waterways.
It's the shellfish account we're discussing, isn't it?
Right.
Marine resources, excuse me.
Marine resources, yeah.
Certainly could see clarification, I mean, that would be a simple, Mr. Auditor, what did you think, conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we get that far.
And if it turns out we can, we'll address it then. I think it's a good catch, it never even crossed my mind, but... Yeah.
But it requires...
Warren, I mean, he put this together and pretty much thought it through and brought it to Adam. All he has to do is, you know, get the estimate from the contractor, he's already talked to the landowner. I'm pretty much seeing this, this idea through, I think it's, I think it definitely has merit as long as it accommodates the shellfish committee members. And the property owner also is being extremely cooperative and accommodating. I think it's definitely worth pursuing.
This will definitely impact their ability to go out there. The parking currently is insufficient, so if they lose that parking, they really won't have any place to park. So it could jeopardize some of their, their livelihoods actually.
There hasn't been, there hasn't been a public parking area down there.
It's always been allowed on that end, that who used to own the property used to allow the diggers to park there. But now that it's under new ownership.
They did have, there was a permit that you had to fill out.
For roadside parking, yeah.
So the new owner wants to continue the permission, he just wants to move the location.
Yep. Yeah, they just want to put it somewhere else, and in order to do that,
Yeah.
the work needs to be done to the site.
Yeah.
They want the town to pay for it.
So I think we should, just for it go on, continuing.
How close is the proposed clean hacky area to High Water? And how do you regulate who parks there, say, for example, between diggers and island users and kayak users?
I haven't seen the proposal, I don't know.
Well, to go to that point, I mean, to the extent, what you just heard me say is the extent of basically what I know. But to that point, though, is if you were, if the town receives a public easement to this area, then I don't see how the town or anybody else could restrict who and what. If we use public monies to develop this little piece of property, I don't see how we would be able to restrict you parking there, because you want the view, and a digger going there to do his work, so...
Currently, the parking is permitted by the town hall, and one of the requirements is that you have to be a resident of the town. And so that eliminates a lot of lone diggers, because they're not residents.
For roadside parking.
With the Sabino parking.
Yeah.
It would also restrict out-of-state son of residents, too, wouldn't it?
Who use the landing.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of questions that...
I think there's a rat's nest to be kicked right here with this one, so...
When there's, there is a public landing on the Mountain Road, I understand, that also has parking, there wouldn't be that much difficulty from Sabino to the Mountain Road, perhaps, depending on what the... If I, if I were the new owner, I might be a little bit concerned once I found out what having the easement might mean for me. So I think further discussion is definitely in order.
Yeah, I think given the gravity of what we're discussing when it comes to the new owner's property, that a conversation between the owner and the board of selectmen might be more volatile.
Yeah, and the shellfish committee.
And unfortunately, it's on Steve's comment, we have to check and see how far this from High Water, and what we can do construction-wise or...
Well, I have concerns about Army Corps of Engineers and DEP permits and so forth as well.
Right, and that's a valid point.
Information we don't have, that we probably should get a hold of and discuss before we...
Go too far?
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
I think that we should give our blessing, and Warren should continue.
Yeah, to explore, would we want to invite the homeowner to the next meeting?
See how far we get.
Because the shellfish committee meets not until after the next select board meeting.
If I may make a suggestion, maybe doing that, if we invite the homeowner to the next meeting, we also, so that they can have an open discussion with the board, on top of that, Warren provides an actual written estimate from a contractor.
A plan.
And, yeah, a plan, so that way, if a contractor says no, actually, in an estimate, this is going to cost twenty thousand dollars, that'll probably influence the selectmen's decision, so... It, I don't know. So, that's questions Warren should have.
It's probably, it's probably going to need to be surveyed anyway, so the more information we get now, whatever.
Yeah, so I mean, if, once we discuss the easement piece with the homeowner, that may change the direction of this conversation, once they have an understanding of what that is, and then the cost of the project also, so before we get too into the weeds with permits and Army Corps and all those things.
Who can use it, who can't, yeah, let's see what the proposal is. I agree.
Just as a general note, it's, the availability of parking at any landing is scarce, so... Whatever you can do to get a little more legally and corporatively.
Steve Keel could help us out with that.
He's gonna build a parking structure there?
Sure.
Um, parking committees, so, shall we ask Adam to invite the homeowner, the landowner, to the next meeting, or should we wait until July, after Warren gives us more information?
Well, I think, I think he's got a written estimate from a contractor, and he has some sort of a plan of what he wants to do. That would be a good time to bring in the homeowner, property owner, as well, to that meeting. Tentatively, I guess, it would be the next meeting if he can get all the stuffs on. And, you thought about it then, what do you think, Adam?
Sure, yeah, I'll find out when the homeowner is available, it's the end of the month or beginning of July. I think they live by mistake, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, we were gonna, we were gonna make a motion?
Do we need a motion, or we can, do we just agree that this should be done? I don't think we need a motion, I think we're in agreement.
Well, agreement, yeah, okay. Okay, next item, appointed town committees' review slash discussion. I'll give it to Adam, you've done more every week than you want, but I have.
So simply put, the board of selectmen has been provided with a list of committees and committee members. This was prepared by the town clerk, Carly Perry, for, just to review. In recent past, the board has expressed the desire and so forth, just to review who, how many committees we have, who's appointed those committees, and what the point of each of these committees are, I mean, what their marching orders are. The board is being provided with this updated list, so they're aware of who's doing what. The, my understanding from talking to you, Peter, was that we wanted to provide this with, to the entire board, so the board could have the next couple of weeks to individually review the list. And then on the twenty-fifth, when the board is tasked with doing the annual appointments, you'd be able to decide if there are going to be any changes or not.
Yeah.
So this is less of a major discussion tonight, more of just a providing you with the information for your individual reviews, and then continued discussion on the plane, better?
Yeah, the purpose of this is to evaluate, part of the purpose of this is to evaluate each committee's effectiveness, whether it's accomplishing anything, and if so, yeah.
Yeah.
How we're gonna act on it.
Uh, yes.
So, um...
I'm not on the list, but obviously we will be adding a library to this.
Yeah. Yeah, if the board decides to appoint them.
If they create them.
Which there has been some public interest of folks that have come...
We have a chairman, definitely.
So do I, yeah.
We like to refer her as Miss phone.
So, um...
Just never go again.
So do we need to do anything more tonight about with the town committees?
It was my understanding that this was just to provide you with the information so that they could...
So we can discuss it.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, there it is, written right here, right here. That's what I was gonna ask you, because I do... All right, thank you. And then, um, next up, next is, every year after town meeting, this board elects, has an election for chairman of the committee. That is scheduled for the twenty-fifth as well?
Right now, effective on the twenty-fifth, is what you told me.
Oh, okay, yeah, I thought we were gonna have the election tonight, and the new chairman can chair that meeting.
Yes.
So, I open the floor to any nominations to the chairman.
I nominate.
I second, I also close.
That was fast.
All those in favor?
Why, thank you.
Congratulations on the...
Want this to be secret, Alan?
No. I think Box isn't even here.
So we have, oh, that box, we can't vote without box. So we have a, we have a motion on the floor to elect Alan Essie as chairman of the West Coast Board of Selectmen. Right here, I second.
She, she seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? And all opposed?
I abstain.
Served me well.
Yeah, take it, take that back.
I can't take it, because it's not effective until it's...
I'll hold it for last time.
After the meeting is over, he's gonna shove all the stuff in the table.
We move to adjourn?
No, we have other.
We have other, okay.
Any other? Any other business? No? We have a executive session, David.
Do they have a...
There is a, for the land that, um...
Yes, you're talking about the, you're talking about the foreclosed property.
Well, there are three pieces of property, you said, that would be...
And I apologize, because the, when we discussed the agenda, the selectman asked me to put it off until the beginning of July, and I apologize that I did not reach back out to you. So that is my fault for not reaching out to you. What she's, what she's asking about is the tax foreclosed property discussion that we're planning to have regarding the disposition.
Yeah.
And so forth. I'm sorry for my lack of community...
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't that, it was a piece of property that the town owns, that I sent a letter that I'm interested in purchasing.
Yes, it's, that, yes, the one that has the telephone pole in the middle of it?
Yeah, but it wasn't, it's not a foreclosed, doesn't have anything to do with...
No, it's town-owned property, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we want to discuss, is town-owned property, some of which is foreclosed.
Okay.
Apologize for not articulating that properly, yes, it is to town-owned property, most of which is foreclosed property. I should have called you back, and I did not, and I apologize for that.
And part of the reason we, why we put this, we put this off till the first meeting in July, mostly my request, because there are three properties in question, and we wanted, we want to get past town meeting, all that. And we want an opportunity to give our full attention to each of these properties, because each situation is unique, and that's why we kept it in the middle of the sun.
Because you are in a butter, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And you were looking to expand your lot, well, in a sense.
Relieve the town of the burden of having to own it.
Get it back on the tax form. We'll have, we'll have that fire truck forty-nine.
So when is this gonna, this discussion going to occur?
Two weeks, well, we'll get the town...
Be quiet, it'll be the ninth of July.
It's the first meeting in July.
Yeah.
Monday, is that a Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
I'm sorry to waste your time tonight.
It's okay.
You owe your coffee.
Absolutely.
That'll, that'll pretty much be the big discussion during that meeting. If there's any other business that we're gonna conduct, it'd be minor. We want all of our attention on those three properties. Yeah.
And what of the other two?
Oh, there's one at, there's one at...
Quarter Point?
Yeah, Quarter Point, Brockweed Road.
Brockwood.
And, uh, where's the other one?
Monco.
Monco, yeah.
And then there are some less valuable ones as well, that...
Yeah, and, most are worthless, but, yeah. Okay, so, and we, we have to have an executive session tonight. Uh, so I invite a motion to enter into executive session.
So, Mr. Chairman, I request that we enter into an executive session pursuant to Title One, Chapter thirteen, Section five, four, or five, six, A of the MRS, with the purpose of discussing personnel issues.
Thank you, everybody.